Good evening. Today is Wednesday, September 10th, the time is 6:30 PM and I am calling this meeting of the Macomb Township Board of Trustees to order and we will say the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Posey, we call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, trustee Kuzmano.
Here.
Trustee Lucido.
Here.
Trustee Papa.
Here.
Trustee Oliver is absent, treasurer Gillette.
Here.
Clerk Posey here, supervisor Vivian.
Here.
All members are present except for trustee Oliver.
Moving on to approval of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions?
Mr. Supervisor, I have one proposed add-on under supervisor's office, which will be item number 15, and that is a request approval for pay-at-sales and service to complete emergency repair to the ladder truck in the amount of $42,204.
Chair, move to approve the agenda with the addition.
Any questions or discussion? Motion by trustee, um, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the agenda with the addition, members please vote. Um, moving on to approval of the bills, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Support. Any questions or discussion on the bill run? Hearing none, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Papa to approve the bills, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And now, moving on to approval of the previous meeting's minutes from August 27th, is there a motion to approve?
Trustee Kuzmano makes the motion.
Support. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion by trustee Kuzmano, supported by trustee Papa to approve the meeting minutes from August 27th, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, this will take us to public comment. Anybody who wishes to make public comment may do so, now, on the right-hand side of the room, please give us your.
Please give us your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name's Ron Cracchiola, uh, 46 Dills 01 North Avenue, you might know my place here at the Big Lions Garage. I wanna, uh, thanks for having me here this evening, and I know there's a lot of Big Lions fans here that work here, that on the trustee, on the board, on the township, everywhere. This game this week is huge. We forgot about Green Bay, you know, not only the football game, but the honor and Robert Porche, and the Ring of Honor. So the house will be packed, the roof will be coming off that place, and we'll be tailgating, it's gonna be a sea of silver and blue. Forward down the field, the Lions team, and we're the yield, and with a blue and silver wave, stand and cheer the brave, rah rah rah, go hard and win the game, we're gonna be well-kee, our friends, down the field and gain a Lions victory, go Lions, woo! How's your baby? Chicago's gonna go home sad, I'm telling you right now.
All right.
Godspeed.
So, right, before you go, before you. Mr. Crackman. Before you go, Ron, I have something for you. So in honor of all your years of dedication to the Detroit Lions, Macomb Township is gonna recognize you as our official ambassador of Detroit Lions pride.
All right. Woo! Proud to be in the community.
Hey, we love to have you here, we're happy to have you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, go Lions.
Have a real nice meeting tonight, no arguments.
Yes, sir.
You're probably be happy.
Yes, sir.
You can stick around and ref the meeting if you want.
Well, thanks to Mr. Cracchiola for joining us today, and go Lions. All right, if there's any other public comment on any of the agenda items, now would be the time. I don't know, he else wants to follow that. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move the consent agenda in its entirety.
Support.
Any questions or discussion on the consent items? Hearing none, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido to approve the consent agenda, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. This will take us to, so we have presentations, so, just this past summer, and we held a contest for summer photos for here, taken here in Macomb Township, and after much deliberation, and a very hotly contested vote by the people of Macomb Township, I am very pleased to announce we have our winners. In third place, with photo of girl at lemonade stand, is Mr. Albert Krakowski. In second place, which is a photo of vegetables at Altermat Farm, Morgan Pankowicz. And in first place, with the photo of her dog Ranger, is Carol McCulawit, McCulaw, Cleavage. God, I knew I was gonna, I knew I wasn't gonna do it. So, we had 41 different submissions, 18 different residents submitted photos, we received over 300 votes. Um, I wanna thank everybody for their participation, and especially to our sponsors. So our first-place winner will receive a $200 gift certificate from Dave and Buster's. Our second-place winner will receive a $100 gift certificate from our friends at Bubba's 33, and our third-place winner will receive a gift certificate for $60 from El Cheryl. So congratulations, I have your gift certificates all up here.
That was the cutest. Lemonade photo.
Yep. Find my agenda. All right, and now, taking us on to new business. So we were requested to close township offices during the Christmas and New Year's holiday, and before we get a motion, I wanna point out to the board that this item does have to be subject to the execution of two letters of understanding with both the management union and the hourly union. So knowing that, is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
Support.
So I just said this motion has to be subject to the execution.
I made a motion to approve the execution amendment.
So it should just be a motion to approve, the request is presented, understanding that the letter of understandings would have to be executed.
Motion to approve the understanding that the letter of understanding must be understood and acted.
You like that? That's lawyer speak.
I think we all understand.
I, well, most of us, I hope, understand. You agree to that?
Is that true?
Okay. Um, Jeff, now your turn.
All right, thank you, Mr. Supervisor, board members. Based on previous research by the township, including a review of cost savings and assured availability to the public, the township has historically closed township offices between Christmas and New Year's Day, but this year I'm also requesting the township to be closed one additional day, Friday, January 2nd. The treasurer's office has been open one day during this period to collect taxes, and appropriate staffing arrangements are made with the fire department. And as the supervisor said, the closure, with exceptions, has been discussed with the unions, and we'll be waiting for those L O Us to be signed. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tobaka. Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to approve the closing of township offices during the Christmas, New Year's holiday, with the understanding that the letters of understanding with the unions must be executed first. Members, please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to next item, is a request to hire a full-time tire fighter, Mr. Tommy Smith.
Motion to approve?
Support. Mr. Tobaka.
Thank you again. Human Resources posted internally for the position of full-time firefighter, we received one application for the position, the candidate we are recommending is Tommy Smith. Tommy has been a part-time firefighter with the township since August 28th, 2017. He has all the required certifications needed for this position, and this would be a seamless transition to this full-time position. If approved, the effective date would be sometime in mid-September. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the hiring of Mr. Tommy Smith as a full-time firefighter, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously, congratulations. Does anybody have an interview now, or later? We can do it after the meeting, we'll be quick. There's not much left on the agenda. This will take us to item 12, is a request to approve the accessory structure setback zoning ordinance amendment, sections 10.0311, yard and lot area requirements, and 10.0331 accessory buildings, you gotta work on these titles, Josh. So move.
Support.
Any, um, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. As you mentioned, this would be an amendment to two different ordinance numbers, section numbers, they deal with the same thing, it's actually listed twice in the ordinance, so what we're changing is sheds 150 square feet and smaller, right now they're required to be seven and a half feet offside and rear property lines, we're reducing that down to five feet to allow people to have a little bit more use of their rear yards. And the update for the second section is, rather than listing the same dimensions twice, it's referring back to the first section, so that if we ever decide to change this again, we only have to change one section.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any question or discussion? Hearing none, motion by trustee Papa, supported by clerk Posey, to approve the accessory structure setback zoning ordinance amendment for sections 10.0311 and 10.0331. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a request to award design work for the Macomb Township Square to OHM Advisors in the amount of $180,000.
So move.
Support.
Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board. In January of this year, treasurer Gillette brought to the board a motion for applying for this grant, this is through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, we were awarded the grant, the grant overall will cover 1.9 million dollars, just over 1.9 million dollars, with half of that being the township's funding, in order to facilitate what will be developed in this, this being the town square we're talking about, we need to design the, the square, and we are recommending OHM, who we've been working with on Broughton Road, who has kind of the feel and the aesthetic of what we're looking for in this area, so we feel it's logical that they be handed this, this work.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by clerk Posey, to award the design work for Macomb Township Square to OHM Advisors in the amount of $180,000. Members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And our next item is a request to approve the historic Macomb Township Hall rental policy and procedure effective September 11th, 2025.
So move.
Support.
Uh, so as described in your board packet, uh, this is a policy that will allow us to lease out or rent out the historic Macomb Township Hall, which has, as of a couple of years ago, been relocated to the Town Hall campus. Uh, we've had some inquiries over the past couple of years since we moved it, um, we do have at least one event gonna be held there, we've had some other inquiries for weddings, so we wanted to make sure we had addressed all of the policy concerns and make sure the board had approved a rate structure. Um, all of it's laid out in the board materials, and I'll take any questions that the board may have. No questions? Motion by trustee Lucido's, uh, who made the motion, I'm sorry. Motion by treasurer Gillette, supported by trustee Lucido, to approve the historic Township Hall rental policy and procedure effective September 11th, 2025, members please vote. Motion passes unanimously. And our last item is the add-on, this is a request for a repair of our ladder truck to pay-at-sales and service in the amount of $42,204. Is there a motion to approve?
Trustee Kuzmano makes a motion to approve.
Support.
Chief?
Mr. Supervisor, members of the board, I'm requesting your approval for pay-at-sales and service to complete an emergency repair on the ladder truck. The truck has been removed from service and cannot be used until the repairs have been completed. The swivel that allows the ladder to rotate is inoperable, it was removed from service last week when it failed during a morning truck check. The estimated cost for the parts is $35,484, and labor is estimated at $6,720. It's estimated that the truck will be out of service for approximately a month. With that, I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or discussion, yep?
I just had a question, was it damaged, or was it like just normal wear and tear, or?
Uh, normal wear and tear, it's 14 years old now, so, um, they did the truck check, noticed, uh, when it went up into the left, uh, we lost all power on it, and so, upon inspection, they discovered that the swivel was, uh, no longer operable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Is there redundancy so that there's no risk of, uh, like anything? Is there redundancy so that there's no risk of, uh, anything bad happening as a result of this vehicle being out for a month?
Correct, uh, we've notified our neighboring communities, as far as the mutual aid goes, that it's, uh, inoperable, uh, so they don't request it, and vice versa, we've set up our plan to have, uh, an apparatus similar to it respond when we're, when needed in our township.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Kuzmano. Anyone else? Hearing none. Uh, motion by trustee Kuzmano, supported by treasurer Gillette, to approve the repair of the ladder truck to pay at sales and service in the amount of $42,204, members please, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, this takes us to our second public comment, anyone who has anything to say to the board may do so now at the microphone on the right-hand side of the room. I don't see anyone making a move, so we are gonna move on to board comments. Just briefly, congratulations to the photo contest winners, congratulations to the new firefighter, full-time firefighter, thank you for your service, and, uh, thank you to Crackman for coming in and pumping us up for the game this weekend, thank you. Thank you, Pete. Trustee Papa.
Yes, I'd also like to congratulate our, our photo winners, our newest, uh, full-time firefighter, uh, I also, um, afraid to have to be a little serious, so I wanna give my deepest condolences, uh, to the fatal shooting of, uh, conservative commentator Charlie Kirk today, um, you know, it's, two weeks ago we had the situation in Minnesota, now this, uh, it's a, it's a shame that we have these things and, uh, that we live in this age, but hopefully there's some things that we can take away, and maybe there's some lessons we can carry forward in our work, so, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Kuzmano.
No comment tonight.
Thank you, trustee Kuzmano. Treasurer Gillette?
I'd just like to, again, echo my colleagues in thanking the winners and congratulating them, and also thanking, uh, firefighter Smith for his service and coming on board full-time, so thank you.
Clerk Posey.
Thank you, again, I'd like to congratulate the photo winners, it's, um, I was surprised to see how many people actually entered into the contest and participated in the voting, so that's exciting that that, um, project is accelerating. Uh, congratulations to firefighter Smith, um, I'm ecstatic that we've hired a full-time firefighter and added you to our staff, so, uh, we can continue to move forward with that effort, and good luck, go Lions.
Thank you, clerk Posey. Uh, congratulations to the contest winners, uh, you know, it's really great for us to be able to see the township through the eyes of our residents when they submit the photos, so, something we're gonna continue to have, and hopefully people continue to participate. Congratulations, Mr. Smith, welcome aboard, looking forward to having you here full-time. Uh, thank you to Mr. Crackiola, who is our, uh, claim to fame when it comes to Lions pride, and we could not have a better ambassador for the township for the sake of the Lions. Um, and I don't wanna dwell on it, but trustee Papa's right, the act of violence and cowardice today was just appalling, and it really does have to stop. Um, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Any questions or discussion? None, motion by clerk Posey, supported by trustee Lucido, to adjourn the meeting, members please vote.
I have to drag this out for like 12 minutes.
Motion passes unanimously. Meeting is adjourned.
No sweat.